I would like to call the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three City of Pleasant Ridge Commission Meeting to Order. Um, I, I would like to call the March fourteenth, uh, twenty twenty-three City of Pleasant Ridge Commission Meeting to Order. May we have the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner Budnick? Commissioner Lenko?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Schmier?
Here.
Mayor Scott?
Here.
Um, why don't we go ahead and get started with, uh, a public discussion? Were there any items from the public tonight? Ted.
Okay. Here we go.
Thank you.
Good evening, um, Mayor, Commissioners, uh, staff, viewers. Uh, Ted Zachary from the Environmental Group, sixty-eight Devonshire, Pleasant Ridge. And, um, I have a question for you. Has anyone heard of the program On the Road with Steve Hartman? No? Okay, this could be good.
Is there one?
Because, um, well, I, I had a chance to watch YouTube with my family and we were watching comedians. Uh, Netflix and YouTube, and after a while, I got a little tired of this, and we somehow stumbled on, On the Road with Steve Hartman. We found it, we loved it so much, we were, we were watching it for hours and hours. It's a program about kindness, unbelievable. And, uh, one of the programs on that, uh, agenda or whatever you call it, they had, uh, uh, they showed that a lot of school systems adopted watching the program and discussing it. Because, you know, the reading, writing, arithmetic, science, stuff like that, but nothing about interacting with your fellow classmate or other people in the neighborhood. So I'm asking Alex to go to the, um, meeting, the school board meeting.
Uh, it's coming Monday.
Great, to, uh, to discuss, uh, the possibility of having somebody just plain look at it, maybe implement, uh, implement it in, uh, the, the Ferndale School System. So, um, let's see. It's basically, uh, showing how to be kind with people. A lot of the programs are tear drinkers. Okay, so, uh, they really are, it's, it's a beautiful program. And hoping that i- if the school system gets it going to implement that with being kind with people, it will spill over to being kind to the earth. So everybody wins. And part of my, uh, visual aid. So hopefully somebody could, uh, remember that, uh, too. Oh yeah, school system, I like that too, maybe. And another little one that's given to me, just, just be kind.
Oh, nice.
Oh, that's very cool.
I kinda liked the, when I saw it was blue with a little dot, be kind, period. And maybe that's a possibility to maybe have it available here, uh, at, at City Hall to give to people. Oh, any questions?
That's very nice. Conviviality is one of those attributes that I think we could all have more of in this world.
Yeah, I think it's just beautiful to just be kind. Oh, I might as well mention this one thing. One day, I was going down Indiana Street and I got a telephone call from my daughter. So instead of driving, stuff like that, I pulled over. And I was right, real close to Maywood, I think. And I'm talking to my daughter and a lady stops her car, rolls down her window, I rolled down mine, and she thought, yeah, she asked, is everything okay? I still remember that, that was, that was last year, that was just beautiful, you know? You know, just, just plain being kind, it's just nice. So anyway, I'm being kind to the people, be kind to the earth. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hope it works, good luck on that.
Uh, were there any other items for public discussion?
Yeah, I would like to say something if I could. First off, I would like to thank the city for taking care of the tree during the ice storm that fell on my house. It damaged the roof and the siding and the gutter and we called that night, fell about nine fifty at night, and by ten the next morning, the tree was off the house cleaned up, and I appreciate that, that was nice. And I'd emailed James about it and they sent an arborist out to look at the tree. And the tree needs to come down. And I'm very concerned with the rot that's in the trunk. And the tree guy could see where the bark was starting to separate, like he was concerned another branch might come on the house and another one could go in the street. And I was, I know it's on the list to come down, do you have a timeline on when that might be?
Um, no exact timeline now, it'll be this year.
Just this year, no?
And we, we, we got the report, the, the, the arborist said, you know, those are all possibilities, but in his opinion, it wasn't in urgent or, or urgent need.
So if the tree comes down on my house, is the city gonna repair my house? Because it wasn't taken down? If it was on my property, I'd have the tree taken down that day or the next day, within a week, you know, so. I understand, you know, they had, they were down the street as soon as they're done with my tree, taking one off someone else's house, so. You know, I get it, they're really busy, but it really scares me and concerns me, and I would like it expedited, really, if I could. And, and then when, when the time comes, it'd be nice to see the stump ground so I could put another tree in, and I don't want, like, a tree brought in by landscaping, they bring in the trees that nobody wants. That's why you end up with black gums and those lindens, the little leaf linden, like what's in my house, those aren't even native trees of Michigan. And they're just messy nasty trees, when those black gums start maturing, you're gonna be replacing sidewalks, curbs, and roads because they have shallow roots and they'll bust everything up. So, and the seed pods are like little landmines about the size of a golf ball. They'll plug up your sewers to no end, they're a very, very bad tree to put in a, you know, and they're native of the south, they're not even northern tree, that's why they don't lose their leaves until January, late December, early January. So it would be nice, I would like to put in a native tree, and I'll even pay for the tree if I can pick out the kinda tree I want, and.
I can't recall what kinda tree is on Woodward Heights. What type we specify?
Yeah, I'd have to look.
Yeah.
Probably plain trees, I think we've done zelkovas there too.
Mm-hmm.
There were a few sweet gums.
Yeah, I don't want a gum, and I don't want another linden. I'd rather not have a tree than have one of them. But anyway, I appreciate you guys taking care of the tree, I really do, that was really nice, and I have another question. When and if, is anything gonna be done on Woodward Heights to calm traffic? Haven't heard anything about it in quite a while now.
We're in design with the engineers, they're, they're laying out the plans right now.
So it's going to be done probably this summer something?
That's the goal.
Okay.
Yep.
I appreciate it, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, and name and address, just for the record.
Sixty Woodward Heights in Howard Smith.
Thank you.
Yep, I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, was there anything else for public discussion?
Good evening, Jay Foreman, sixty Oakdale. Uh, I came up here tonight, I was planning to read some statements I read at the school board meeting, because that meeting wasn't recorded or anything. Uh, I thought maybe it would bring some additional awareness to it, but I've kinda changed my mind on that, really, I just, the, the brunt of it is, I, I know you guys are all aware, because we've talked about it a little bit. Um, I feel kinda like I was misled with the materials leading up to this twenty twenty bond request. Um, saying, you know, the whole thing about, we build this new school building, then the kids from Roosevelt will move into that building, and the CASA program will move into Roosevelt. All sounded perfect, that's a big part of why I voted to support that bond. Um, building a new school is very expensive, and it wasn't something I looked forward to, uh, the idea of paying for all this extra money for all these additional years, but I thought, hmm, that's a good solution. Um, now we find out this isn't gonna happen. The CASA program is leaving our district, going to Oak Park, building in Oak Park. Huge disappointment for me and many other families. We still have access to that program, of course, so it's great. But it's not gonna be right in that building, which is kinda what was sold to us in the beginning, so I'm very disappointed in that, I just wanna make anyone who might be watching aware, if they're not already aware of it, again, I know you guys are already aware of it. So I'm sure you're gonna stay in communication with the district on this, I know you're already on top of that. Uh, very interested in what's gonna happen with that building, since we know it's, it's not gonna be what we had originally thought. But, uh, the idea of being sold a certain thing, and then we agree to that, we vote for it, and we're gonna pay for it, and now a big part of that is not happening, it's quite a disappointment for me, and I feel misled, uh, so I just wanted to put that out there. Um, on a lighter note, question kind of, if you don't have an answer today, that's just fine. Um, I asked about this a number of years ago, I'm gonna ask about it again. Portageons in the front yard, is there anything we can do to prohibit that? When you're having construction, if you have a way to put it in your yard, can we make it so you must get it, some sort of acceptance from the city that it can go in the front yard, because we see that you can't put it in the rear yard? It's a very easy thing to do, many times these companies just deliver these things, because it's easy to put them on the front. You can simply push it right back in your yard, it's very light to push, or you simply ask them to put it back there, and they will. I've had to do that a couple of times, just really unsightly, having this thing on your front lawn and what goes on in there, not really conducive with our neighborhood, in my opinion. So, uh, and many times they sit out there for months and months on end, you know, we've seen some decorated with Christmas lights over this holiday season, because they've been up for so long.
Actually, we, we, it's in the ordinance.
That you must put Christmas lights up? Happened before my time or after, but, um, so anyway, I, I don't know where to go with that, if it's here, if it's planning commission, whatever, but I'd really like to talk about that and see if there's anything we can do to kinda just say, come on. If you must put it there because you cannot put it in the rear, fine, but, you know, otherwise, get it out of the sight of it. We don't need to be seeing that we're walking our kids on the sidewalk or whatever it is, or hearing it, or anything else. Right? So that's.
The, the answer is, we do have an ordinance, it regulates those, um, and a lot of times what we run into is getting it into the backyard. The only place would be to, would be to put it on the driveway.
Yeah.
Because a truck is bringing it, so then the homeowner loses access to their garage. Um, we don't allow them to put them at the sidewalk anymore, you know, they used to be like right there on the sidewalk typically. So now they have to push them at least as far up in the front yard as possible, so that you don't get the smells when you're walking by in the sidewalk, I know they're unsightly. Um, but a lot of times it is, there's practical issues with getting it in the backyard, and then a location that's not impacting other things like access to garages and, you know, things like that, so. Um, and then on an active work site, when you've got it farther back, you know, when you're building a house, it's in the way, uh, of a lot of things, so that's one of those, um, I don't know, unsatisfactory kinda things that we deal with.
Thank you for that, um.
Is there one that you're seeing now that's on the sidewalk, or if you just, it's just a general thing that?
No, you know, just, it's, it's been a, they're out all the time. I don't remember the street, there's one with the Christmas lights, and that's funny and all that stuff, but it's been up for a long time, and it's in the front. We all, we don't all have very deep yards, right? Some of us have very deep yards, so I have the luxury of being able to put it in my yard, and my garage is right there, sure, I just push it aside, two people can slide it aside if you do that proactively before it's extra heavy. Um, so, I hate to get into the stuff on this, uh, yeah, but, you know, I think there's a way, and there's always, well, it's too hard, because it's in, you know, we built the garage right there and we just slid it over, you know, it can be done, so, I don't know, if there's any way that, there can be some consideration on that, that unless there's a really good reason why it has to be in the front, put it in the back, so. I don't know, I know I, I brought it up here, but is this the right place for it? Is there anywhere I can bring up additional discussion without having to get into these types of details again? Just about the, the thing sitting there.
I mean, it's a, it's a city code, so it, it's this, it's the city commission who passed the ordinance, and, um, we'd have to look at adjustments to it.
All right, well, why don't we just take a moment to read through it at our own time, and then it will come back up?
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other items for public discussion?
I wanna talk about the dog park, but I don't know if that's on the dog park line item.
Uh, line item?
Yeah.
Cool. All right, let's move on to the liaison reports, uh, Commissioner Schmier.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, nothing huge this month, um, but March eighteenth, ten till two, the museum will be open. So come down, check out your folder, all of that.
The eighteenth you said?
Yes, the Saturday, is that the Saturday, the Saturday?
Okay.
The Saturday, ten to, ta- ten to noon. Awesome, and that's all I have.
Wow, that was a quick one.
It was a quick one.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Budnick is not here tonight, would you like to read his report?
I will, um, Shawnee shared, um, some information with me, so the Recreation Commission has a fifty-plus day trip coming up. It's Thursday, April thirteenth, um, it's going to the Town Peddler and lunch. There's no place on earth like Town Peddler. At Michigan's first and largest craft and antique mall, you'll find four hundred plus dealers, offering everything from handcrafted items, gift lines, vintage, uh, retro and repurposed antiques, artists' creations, and so much more. This'll be, um, I guess it's huge. It's from nine thirty AM to one PM, the cost is six dollars, um, for shopping, and, uh, the cost of lunch is on your own. And so that's for the fifty-plus club day trip. Yeah. Um, then we have the Citywide Garage Sale is coming up. It is going to be May thir- uh, Saturday, May thirteenth, from, um, it costs twenty-five dollars for a sign, and then that way you get put onto the map as well. And there's advertisements and stuff like that. Um, it will be, the signs have to be purchased by May first at five PM, so that you'll be included on the map, and please use the, um, the, uh, uh, I don't know what that means, please use the green image with this, so I'm not sure what that means. Sorry. And then the biggest thing, um, to highlight for this one is, it's a deadline to register for the swim team, which is March thirtieth. So everybody, if you have kids, March thirtieth is the deadline. The deadline to apply for summer jobs is March thirty-first, and, you know, for lifeguards and other, uh, camp things. And then also, registration begins on Monday, April third at eight PM for summer, um, oops, for summer day camp. And LIT, uh, the LIT program. All of the information, um, is on the, the city website, so go in there into the rec stuff, um, into the rec, uh, tab, and you can find out lots of details. The April through June ridger will be online soon, and it'll be in your mailbox in a couple of weeks. Please look for the pool schedule, can you believe that? And then, um, also swim lesson descriptions, special event information, and as usual, any questions about recreation programs? Please reach out to the rec department at two four eight, five four two, five nine oh two. Um, and then, yeah, just Shawnee and Greg can answer all of your questions on all these schedules and everything too, but the, you know, everything is up there online.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, Commissioner Lenko, for schools?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, so for schools, as, uh, Mr. Foreman mentioned, uh, CASA is kind of the big topic de jour, um, but at the moment, there isn't a ton of information to communicate out, so, um, we've got lines open with, um, Robert, with the school board, and, um, we'll communicate accordingly. Uh, I encourage any residents, uh, who are interested in participating in the conversation. Uh, next Monday, March twentieth at seven o'clock is the next regularly scheduled school board meeting, uh, at Ferndale High School in the, the, at the Nest. And my line is open, so feel free to email me at my city account, uh, if you have any questions or comments that you would like brought. Uh, but again, I recommend for those who can make it to, to make it in person, if, if they're interested in s- saying something or hearing. Uh, but again, this is one of those decisions that kind of approached us or reached us all in the same kinda way, it was abrupt, and, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll work through this one, um, and then, uh, again, so the next meeting is March twentieth at seven o'clock, and again, I recommend, uh, signing up for the e-blasts and watching any of the previous, uh, mis- meetings online. And as Mr. Foreman pointed out, the last meeting was, uh, Committee of the Whole meeting, which is not recorded or broadcast, so. Uh, really, that's all I got, but, uh, the big point is, if, if you do have something, uh, you want me to relay or have a conversation, my line is open.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add that if you're a parent or an educator in Pleasant Ridge and you don't already have the Remind app, it's something that I was not familiar with, because I'm not a parent. But, um, it's a good way to get information about what's happening with the school, some people will be, um, will feel, I don't know, the word inundated, maybe? There could be lots and lots of, uh, information that comes, if you're only interested in one or two things, uh, it might be tough. And then also, I recommend going to the, uh, the school board does a good job of keeping their, uh, minutes or their meetings updated on their calendar, everything's on the calendar. And I found that you can, um, um, sort through the different kinds of things on the calendar, so if you just wanna see school board meetings, you can click a tab and that pops up, it's not so full, it's a good way to just know which meetings to go to. All right, um, Commissioner Perry?
Thank you.
Again?
I know, here I am. The, um, so the Planning Commission, DDA, will be meeting on Monday, April twenty-fourth, seven PM here at City Hall. They haven't met since our last meeting, so, um, I'll keep you updated on what they're going to, what their discussion topics are going to be. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for anyone on anything? Okay, all right, let's go to governmental reports.
Sure, I'll, I'll go first. Well, I'd like to say thanks for the invitation, and I'm looking forward to becoming a part of the community and to say, coming between being, being kind and then the issue with what's in your yard. Be kind because of what's in your yard, I'm gonna be. No, I just, I, first, I'm just here to actually introduce myself, I just joined Ferndale Public Schools as the leader for school community relations and pupil accounting, which covers the enrollment, uh, department as well. My background, uh, fundamentally is a business background in strategic sourcing and supply, worked, uh, twenty, twenty-plus years in that, and I, after the recession of oh-eight, I decided to get into education and sort of fell in love with giving my skills back, no problem, that's part of the game, right? Giving my skills back to the community. So, i- in, in light of what's been discussed regarding the schools, just know that, uh, my lines of communication are open as well. My office is, it's a new department for the district, we've had a communications leader, but no one on the ground, boots on the ground, to talk and to actually flush out ideas and listen to concerns. So I walked into, uh, the issue that we're talking about, and, and I just wanna move it forward based on what the leadership has determined, so. Yeah, bear with me, and then also, just, uh, be, keep in mind that I will take your concerns up and discuss them with our leadership, um, because that's the, that's the whole goal of a school district, we wanna be partners and neighbors and friends. So, uh, I was very impressed with the building, and I'm very impressed with the municipalities all participating in one district, I can tell you that on the other side of the state, in order to describe Ferndale's district, I had to, to explain to a colleague who came to visit, i- it was like three different distinct districts all deciding that they were going to go to school together, and he just couldn't believe, like, how does that work? So you guys have something special here, and I'm excited to become a part of the community and to, um, learn from you as we continue to develop, um, the Ferndale Public Schools. So just excited, I wanted to say hi, um, and I'll take any questions you have, you can always email me, um, and I will respond, so. Looking forward to getting to know everyone here, any, I guess this is not an exchange, that's my report.
Robert, you, uh, can you give everyone your name?
Sure.
And also, uh, it probably would be helpful to give your email address or?
That's the secret of public relations. You never give your name, you give what you do, and everybody, he's that big bald head guy, you know? Um, Robert Tolbert, T.O.L., T as in Tom, O.L., B as in boy, E.R.T. And, um, I could, I have cards, I'll leave a few cards here, and, um, yeah, just reach out at any time. I'm into doing lunches, I'm into doing teas and coffees, because I'm trying to learn all the hot spots, so if you have, if you're somewhere and you're saying, hey, I wanna talk to you, can you meet me, I'll meet you for coffee or tea, and we can discuss, so. We have some exciting things coming up, let me just tell you, there is a report, I'm working through some of the planning for, um, a series of coffee sessions with the leadership, um, you'll be hearing more about it, both the board and the cabinet. We wanna establish more authentic communication between our constituencies, and I just came back from a conference, and they said, if you're gonna be in school PR, stop using words like constituencies, but we want, also, I'm, like, pretend I didn't say that, we're, we're just trying to become more, um, conversational in our approach, because one of the things about doing this job that I really appreciate is that I'm talking about communicating about the most important thing to people, and because I'm a, a new dad, a five and a three-year-old, and the authentic communication from the educational provider, there's really nothing else more sacred. So if you have any concerns, just, just know I'm not giving you varnish, I'm giving you exactly what I can, we don't do spin in school PR, we do, you know, usually it's issue mitigation or need-to-know type of issues that we might massage, but we're not into the game of spin and hyperbole, so. That's the kinda leadership that I bring to this job, and I'm, I'm looking forward to, to doing that across the board with all three, three and a half, four of the municipalities we serve, I'm just learning them all, so. Uh, that's, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could, um, can, can we ask questions?
Yeah.
Cool. Um, so I think it was interesting, because we were talking about, we were at this, the Committee of the Whole meeting, and that was a really, it was a really interesting meeting, and I think Jay made the point that it's, or, or Alex did, that it's not recorded, is there any way those meetings could also be recorded, because they were really interest, it was really interesting?
Sure, I can ask that question, that's a board policy question that I can raise, um, and I'm, I'm not certain because of the issues that are discussed prior to the public, you know, the, the regular public meeting, but I can bring that and get an answer for you on that.
Thank you.
And, and if they need help finding someone to do that, we can probably help describe someone that does that service for us in our meetings outside of this building.
Okay.
I'm sure they have someone that they use, but.
Like, the AB team?
Yeah, exactly.
You're right, when we, we, if, if needed, we will reach out, for sure.
Maybe.
Well, thank you for your time, thanks.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you. Fire?
Chief Noack is out in his car, working feverishly, catch up on reports, because he had three back-to-back accidents. So he's trying to, thank goodness, no serious injuries or anything, so, um, we didn't even have to be called, he just handled it all, you know, just applied all his skills forward and took care of everything, um, but no, he's trying to get all those reports done, but he said he had nothing else to report tonight. From the fire department, my biggest thing is, we, I had a new firefighter start yesterday, and I have two more in background. Um, when I stepped in as chief, I came in as a time where previous administration was having a really hard time recruiting and filling vacancies, and we had a lot of vacancies. With where we're at now, we're actually on track, where we're probably gonna become fully staffed for the first time since two thousand sixteen. So we've made some great progress. So what this means to the communities we serve is, as we get staff back up, and I'm putting in for a grant to try to upstaff us, it means that I can probably put, staff a second ambulance. So right now, our ambulance is very busy, you know, we serve three communities, and we're all, it, call volume goes up every single year. So every time I have, uh, the extra personnel working, my first priority will, to be staffed a second ambulance, I do have that new ambulance on order, but it's backlog so much, we probably won't see it till, probably still another year out, it was a six-hundred-day build-out.
Oh my goodness.
Because of the backlog waiting for the chassis, it's all about the chassis from Ford, and so we get it, it's in ninety days till we get our ambulance, we're just waiting to get the chassis from Ford. Um, but, so it's great things for our communities, because having the staff, having extra resources, having extra resources on, on the road to service our communities will be a wonderful thing, so we're really, really close, I have three firefighters that are about to start counting for manpower. Um, what that means, when they come on, they have a certain period of time where it's training before they can work independently and count to our staffing. And then another new one, like I said, that started yesterday, and two more in background, and then I would only have one vacancy left, so we've been great position that we haven't been in for a while, and again, that really increases the services we and the resource we'll have on the road to serve our communities, so that's good news.
Awesome.
You guys have any questions for me?
Nope, I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have, uh, one thing.
Oh, yeah.
So Amanda, uh, Amanda Wall, the- So Amanda, uh, Amanda Wollby, uh, foundation president, uh, intended to be here tonight, but uh, ended up with a conflict and couldn't make it. So she gave me something to read um, about the auction this year.
Oh right.
So the Pleasant Ridge Foundation Auction, it's a party for art, uh, Saturday, May twentieth, five-thirty PM. The annual auction is back for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, so it's at the Recreation Center at Four Ridge Road, uh, as it has been in the past. It'll feature live auction items, uh, fabulous food and drink and the opportunity to support your community. Ticket prices this year are sixty dollars a person early bird until April fifteenth and seventy dollars a person after. There's a maximum capacity of three hundred people, so don't wait. Uh, you can go to the new and improved foundation website at PleasantRidgeFoundation.org or uh, come into City Hall to get your tickets. Do we have those yet?
Not yet.
Okay, well, we need to get those from the foundation and then you can come into City Hall to get your tickets. Uh, in the past, the foundation has donated over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the revitalization of Gainesboro Park, new and improved park lighting, uh, the completely new outdoor patio area and the big room uh, at the community center, as well as access enhancements to the wellness center. Um, this year, the foundation's raising money to collaborate with the city on a project to promote arts and art education in our community. Um, we'll have more about that later on the agenda, uh, but we're excited about it. Um, about a, a good partnership and I, I know that Amanda uh, and the foundation are um, excited about that as well. So.
That's really cool.
Can't forget about the pool scoreboard and timing system this year.
That's right. Thank you, Jay. So yeah, the foundation did uh, help fund um, or maybe funded all of a new um, gap scoreboard and a new timing system.
Wow.
Uh, which should be much better and easier to use um, for, for our, our good volunteers who handle that for us during swim meets.
Right. Cool. So uh, stay tuned. Actually, go to the website because I know that the website is up and uh, you can um, plan for May twentieth.
Yes, PleasantRidgeFoundation.org.
Cool. Alrighty. Any other governmental reports? I think we're set. Uh, why don't we move on to the consent agenda? Uh, baked within this consent agenda is the change that we knew was coming, but it's kind of sad to see coming with Amy leaving us and uh, Kirsten taking on some more responsibilities. And I encourage everyone to, to read the agenda to see the details. Um, maybe we have a motion.
Mayor, I move the consent agenda be approved.
Second. Any comments? Vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Ms. Merlenko?
Yes.
Ms. Schnier?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes. And the motion carries. Alright, we'll move on to dog park lighting.
Yes.
Jim?
Um, after we discussed this in, I believe it was December.
Um. In September.
And September.
And September. Uh, we conducted a survey of the dog park membership uh, to gauge their overall interest in the lighting improvement and also to get input on capital improvements that they'd like to see to the dog park and also willingness to pay to help fund those. Um, the dog park is a user's uh, fee-supported um, park entity since it's not open to the general public. Um, so everything there is, is handled through fees. Uh, dog park membership or entrance fees haven't been increased in probably close to ten years. So um, there hasn't been a lot of capital improvements built into the budget. Um, of the respondents, seventy-seven percent of those who responded and, and we got about a forty to forty-five percent uh, response rate. So as always with a Pleasant Ridge survey, we got good feedback. Uh, seventy-seven percent were in favor of adding lighting. Um, there is a willingness to increase dog park fees. We asked, you know, if you would be willing to increase fees, how much? Ten dollars, twenty dollars, thirty dollars, more than thirty dollars? Um, or zero, that was an option as well. Um, some users uh, who voted no on the lighting improvements did express a willingness to increase fees by about ten dollars a year for other non-capital improvements. But overall, um, twenty-six percent of respondents were not willing to pay additional fees, uh, which lined up pretty well with the inverse of the seventy-seven percent who were in favor of the lighting project. Uh, about half of people are willing to pay um, up to twenty dollars additional per year. Uh, and then um, fifteen percent were willing to pay thirty dollars and nine percent were willing to pay more than thirty dollars a year. So there was a drop-off after about twenty dollars. Um, annual fee increase. Um, and that would, that would raise dog park fees from thirty dollars to fifty dollars for your annual membership. Um, other non-lighting improvements that were frequently mentioned and all of the results are in the um, agenda packet if you'd like to see the raw, um, the raw results. But um, the commonly mentioned items were uh, a water fountain reliability improvement or to, probably what we'll end up doing this year is just remove the fountain um, and have a reliable, just a spigot to provide water. Um, updated seating, uh, benches, picnic tables. Um, turf improvements were frequently mentioned. This is a very difficult one at a dog park because when you put turf down, it gets run over by dogs. So um, it's hard to, to do that. I know a lot of dog parks have like a, you know, two-field system where they'll take one out of, you know, service and let the turf regrow there while they're using the other one. Our, it really isn't big enough to effectively do that. So um, I don't know. That's a tough one. Um, shade uh, in the form of either trees uh, and/or shade structures. A, a wind weather shelter structure, which ties into the shade structure as well, of course. And then additional gravel or concrete at the entrances for mud control. So all of those are, are good projects that I think we can tackle in the future. Um, so the requested action is I think one way forward would be to go forward with the lighting project. Um, there's demonstrated support for the project. The net cost to the city um, after the Oakland County grant that we were awarded would be eight thousand dollars. Uh, our recommendation is increase dog park fees by twenty dollars a year, starting July one, two thousand twenty-three. Um, that would raise about three thousand dollars a year for capital improvements. So it'd be about a two-and-a-half-year payback on the lights and then we could look at, you know, what the next project is at that point. Um, and this will build in some money to keep, you know, the dog park maintained and fresh and updated over time. Um, raising fees by ten dollars a year uh, starts to stretch out those payback times for projects and probably doesn't provide the, you know, the bang for the buck that twenty dollars a year would. Um, we will prioritize getting a reliable water source this year. Again, probably replacing the fountain, which um, is sort of two-thirds broken uh, with a spigot. In the community garden. Um, and I would think that we'd prioritize a shade or weather structure with updated seating as the next major project, but we'll come back in a couple of years and see where everyone's at before we proceed with that. And then um, the only other thing I would note is the, the lighting itself. Um, this is the aerial view and you can see the community garden. Um, and then the uh, I don't have my laser pointer. You can see the pathway that comes to the east entrance of the dog park. Um, the lighting, where the fence angles, the lighting would be installed somewhere around that angle um, to illuminate the east end of the dog park, the east entrance, the small dog run and then um, you know, maybe, maybe illuminate the, the western half, I'm sorry, the eastern half of the dog park. The lighting would be, of course, pointing towards six ninety-six. Uh, we are aware, um, we heard a, a resident concern today and, and um, the intention has always been to have those lights pointing away from those backyards on Kensington towards the dog park um, to eliminate the, the um, glare uh, and potential um, lighting issues. Um, we know that that's an issue. We have the tennis court lights, which actually do shine towards houses. Um, and it's something that, you know, it's been there for a long time and we're kind of used to now, but when you add that, that's a change that can have a negative impact. So in this case, the lights will shine away from those houses, um, should minimize that impact. The lights would shut off at ten o'clock. Um, that's when the tennis court lights are um, timed to shut off. It's generally our park shutdown time. Um, so that would be the plan for those. So those are our uh, recommendations based on the input, uh, the Oakland County grant um, and the uh, the quotes we've received. So with that, I would uh, turn the discussion over to you. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Uh, just one for me. Um, there was mention of planting trees. Are we planning to put any trees in this year anywhere? Or do you think that um?
Trees are another tough one to get them established out there. It's a tough environment. I mean, it's windy and hot along six ninety-six. So to get a tree established and growing, and then you also, in the fact, you've got a bunch of dogs running around.
Yes, the tree is a target.
Yeah. So um, you know, you typically don't see a lot of trees in dog parks unless they were there already. Um, so I don't know about that. We'll have to think about that. Um, if we are gonna put trees in, they probably have to be protected or, so it's a lot more than just planting a tree.
Got it.
So, you know, that's one that I would um, stick a pin in. We'll come back to that one.
Okay. Uh, were there any other?
Mr. Mayor, uh, circling back to your point about the, excuse me, resident comment. Um, I think in the December meeting was the last time we discussed this. We had talked about uh, reaching out and getting the voice of the Kensington residents who are against, uh, who live against the fence. Um, but my understanding is that didn't happen right? Like, the survey was sent just to dog park members. Um, so yeah, I'm fully supportive of adding the light. Um, I think maybe at the ten-dollar rate, like two or four-year payback period is inconsequential. But um, I, I'd like for those Kensington residents to have an opportunity to, to speak. So uh, at the party, I was talking to the mayor. Uh, perhaps maybe at the next rec commission meeting, there's like, I don't know, like, what would you call it? Um, an open forum for Kensington residents to, to speak about this. Uh, another thing we had talked about was having a, a diagram or drawing of like exactly where these things are so we're not using our imagination. Um, so I, that might help people visualize what it would look like and how minimal the effect would be. Uh, nobody I spoke with is against it. They just want to better understand it.
Okay.
Or they're in favor of the lights, but you know, they want to better understand it and also be heard. So is that something, I don't want to postpone or, you know, kick this down the road any further. It's been since, what, September since we've been talking about it, but I'd have thought by now we would have talked to the residents on Kensington.
I believe it was reviewed by uh, the rec commission too in, in August or September. Um, my understanding is that they didn't have a quorum at that time. But I don't think they've had a quorum since either, but I do know that the rec, that the rec commission did review it. And there was, from the respondents, a majority of approval amongst the rec commission.
Yeah.
And tell me if I'm misspeaking.
It was mixed. I, I think the majority definitely supported it, but um, that doesn't answer the question about the, the twenty or so houses that are adjacent to the park.
I, I, well, Jim could speak to this better, but I would say that most of the twenty homes would not be affected by the one light. It was probably the three or four directly around the dog park. But it makes sense to me that at the next rec commission meeting, since it went there before, we take it back with whatever our decision is and say, here's what was decided and um, and then give every, anyone that has any further thought an opportunity to go there and express their, their thoughts. And then if there's some major thing that has to be done, it can come back.
Right. And I don't think it has to be anything. I think maybe a picture with, you know, exactly where the placement is and maybe the project isn't fully designed yet and it might be ten feet one way or another, but like generally where it's gonna be and generally what the span of light, like, seeing a picture of it would be super helpful.
Okay. Yeah, and I can recall us having these similar conversations as we were putting lighting in along Gainesboro Park where we just kept the residents informed on what kind of lighting it is. So that's something we just take to the next rec commission meeting.
Sure.
If that's okay with you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if I may, um, my thoughts are, number one, in terms of cost, um, to just um, to Commissioner uh, Lanko's point. I think with the survey coming back showing that twenty dollars was kind of the preference of the people who responded to the survey, I see no issue with increasing that cost, especially because we haven't seen a co- uh, an increase in cost of um, the dog park fee in ten-plus years. Um, as a user of the dog park, whether it be for lights or for future seating and things like that, I think the money, the increase will be well-used. And I think it is supportive. Um, in terms of the lighting, you know, my feeling is we have this great asset, the dog park. And right now, in the winter, it can't be used in the, in the summer and the winter at night after people, before or after work. Um, so I like the idea of being able to extend the use of a really great asset we have. Just like, you know, the path when we put lights out along the pack, path, so it became walkable and the tennis courts so people can play at night. So to me, extending the use of this great asset we already have is important. So I am in support of, yeah, moving forward with the proposal. Um, and I certainly, you know, think that the thought put into the location and the positioning of the light um, is and will continue to be well-thought-out with consideration to anyone abiding that area. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I know there was concern that the, and I'll, I'm interested to hear what the residents has, has to say to who, who are here to discuss it. But the um, there was uh, concern that this will go later at night because of, um, you know, by having lighting. But that's basically only in the winter because people are already able to use it in the summer. Um, so, and we haven't had complaints from that um, usage um, it, it, you know, to nine or ten o'clock at night. So I can't imagine that it would get very much more use or, you know, any more disturbances because I'm sure it won't be the same level of people in the bitterness of winter at nine or ten at night. But um, yeah, I think the placement will be good, you know, just having, you know, w- as we've been discussing this, I go out there uh, frequently and will look at it at night. And just knowing the other lights and things like that and the opportunity to, to direct those lights north. I think, you know, it's, it's a great solution that can bring something that the dog park people really have, you know, organized and brought forward. Um, and, you know, hopefully it, it, it does not seem like it would have any impact on the residents. I talked to a couple of the um, uh, recreation commissioners and they felt, you know, very much from the presentations and the discussions they had that it would not like impact the, the neighbors in a negative way. So hopefully, you know, that's, that's how it would, would play out. And, you know, now with all, lights can have so much more directional, you know, it's, yeah, it's um, it doesn't have to be heavy-handed. It's something that can be very um, thoughtful. Um, and that's it.
Thank you. Did you want to point out to the location?
Yeah, that's just basically when we're with the uh, the uh, the, the electricians, the lighting people, that's what made the most sense because when you, at that location, when the fence bends, it allows you to get a better angle to illuminate the park um, without, you know, having to angle the lights too much. And it also gets as further, as far west as we can um, to get that light, it more to, you know, a more middle part of the park. I mean, it's not very much in the middle, but still helps get the quality of illumination to a more area. Um, you know, there's really not much more. It's a, it's a thirty-foot tall pole. It has a couple of flo- lights on top. So um, it'll be similar to a power pole. Um, and it wasn't my understanding that we were going to survey the residents on Kensington. I certainly wouldn't have ignored, ignored that if that was my understanding coming out of the meeting. I just, I just checked the meeting minutes and it only said res- a survey of the membership of the dog park. So I don't know where that disconnect came in, but um, if that's direction, then we'll do that.
Okay. Um, any thoughts from residents?
Sure, do you want to go or?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
I'm sure of the lights, I will say that.
Oh, it's okay. We're all good. Um, sorry for the construction here, um, the foot. Um, Suzie Sherman Hall, sixty-three Maywood, one of the petitioners. So thank you very much for all the work and the discussion. I'll just say that um, everyone we talked to when we were doing the petition drive, we had this same conversation. Nobody wants to impede anybody on Kensington. Nobody, we, I, you know, I know Allison and Bill and the issues they've had with the lights um, on Wellesley with the other thing, you know, those kinds of things. So it was something that everybody um, had in that conversation. This isn't about inconveniencing or causing other issues for Kensington at all. I'm really glad they're gonna be shut off at a certain time because the intent also is not that they could be an all-night place for whoever has a dog park pass to go. Um, it really is about making it accessible in the winter. And I mean, during the pandemic, everybody could go anytime, right? I mean, everybody was stuck at home. So I mean, it was like a refuge. It was awesome. I was so glad that we have the pass. But um, it's really about the winner and the safety um, and making it more accessible. So I did have a couple of questions. Um, so did you survey Pleasant Ridge people or everybody? So like outside of Pleasant Ridge, people that are dog park members?
It went to all members of the dog park.
That's what I thought. I just, I just wanted to clarify. So, and they still play, pay the, people who are non-residents still pay more?
Correct.
And they pay like twenty dollars more, is that right? I, I thought it was thirty for us and fifty for them, but I, that's why I'm asking.
It's thirty, sixty, I believe. Yeah.
Okay, so will theirs go up too? Okay, will theirs go up the same amount? Okay. I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I just wanted to clarify because I didn't see it in the report and all that. So um, I mean, I was one of the people, I don't know what George did when he filled it out, but I, we didn't discuss it, but I was one of the, probably the nine percent or the fifteen percent. Because uh, we also, I think, suggested, or maybe he did, that, you know, we would be willing to pay for each animal. I mean, it's, it's a household fee, right? So it's one fee per household. So um, whatever. We, we totally want to support it. It's been, it's been wonderful. And invest in these things. Thank you for taking the water suggestion. It's been really rough, um, because the one that's on the bottom for the dogs doesn't work. Um, we all lug backpacks with cooler backpacks with water in them to the park. So um, We all lug backpacks with cooler backpacks with water in them to the parks, so it's literally a team thing, like somebody bring water. So that would be great, and we all would love to chip in and help, I'm sure, well, not everybody, I can't speak for everybody. But there's a lot of people that are supportive that would come and help. So I just wanted to thank you and ask those questions and say that's our intent and our understanding, so we appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the hard work.
Everyone that brought this to our attention. Were there, were there others that wanted to? Yes, please.
So that's my tree, that is right, that's like my house would be the house that the floodlight would back up to. Oh, I'm Amy Rosmas, by the way, eighty-three Kensington. And so I actually signed the petition to get lights added to the dog park, and I appreciate the work that you guys did to do it. Like, and that's not why I'm here, is to complain about the lighting project at all, I'm all for it. I think the concern was, the survey was sent out to the dog park users, much to my dog's chagrin, ours lapsed in January, so we did not get we did not get the survey email. And I think a lot of neighbors that I've spoken to just want more information. And to Alex's point on the last city commission, you did request a diagram and resident feedback. So I appreciate Anne posted, I posted on our Kensington Facebook page last night, just so people were aware what was going on. And Anne kindly responded with the links with timestamps of when to watch the YouTube videos, which I appreciated very much. So I did get to go back and watch for historical context, the last commission meetings. And I did go back and look at a lot of the feedback from the petition, all the names that signed it. And the feedback from the survey, and ten percent of the feedback made specific comments to the concerns of lighting affecting the neighbors back there. So again, I'm for the lighting. When I signed the petition, to me, I was more under the impression that this was going to be extending the walking path lighting and creating that kind of ambiance in the dog park, right? Which is what it seems to be like your option three was, that was about thirty-six thousand dollars that you guys had quoted.
And that wasn't even to do the whole dog park, that was to add a couple of lights.
It looked like two arbor poles and then some additional.
Yeah, I wasn't gonna really illuminate much.
Had I known that it was going to be a thirty foot floodlight, I I wouldn't have signed the petition to to add it. But that's my concern is my bedroom backs up to that light, my daughter's bedroom backs up to that light. So that's, that's where our concern is, and I, again, I think majority of our residents would be happy to have the lighting back there, we just want more information. From a diagram standpoint, I've actually ironically done a lot of lighting install at assembly plants. And you give them a layout, your contractor, your lighting, whoever you're working with, give them a layout or a snapshot or whatever they can put in the lighting that they're looking at, the fixture that they're gonna look to use, and they can look at lumen output. So I didn't know if that was an option to do two diagrams, one for the floodlight option and one for this, the option that you guys looked at for the arbor poles. And just to see what the different lumen output would be and where that lighting would be dispersed at into the park and any potential kickback towards the street. And the second thing I would ask is if there could be a resident survey for those of us on Kensington.
Okay.
Thank you. But again.
I do, like, it's hard because we, we love the dog park, like, we, that was one, we literally bought that house because we were like, look, there's a dog park right here. We can like walk our dog out in the back and go to the park, we love the park. It's just, I just get concerned over the additional light without more information, so that's all.
Thank you.
Jim could probably talk a lot about, a lot more about this than me, but I know from our past experience that a survey to ask all Kensington people how they feel about the one light would probably be more than is needed because it won't affect more than a couple of homes, and even then, may not even affect your home. Because of how it is aimed and how high it is sitting on the pole. In fact, this one is actually probably, just thinking from the past, less affecting of homes because of how high the pole is in comparison to the lights that we put in along Gainesboro.
Right, the real issue with lighting in terms of impact is is glare from being able to see the the source of the light, that's the major issue you get with it. The 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 arbor poles in the in Gainesboro Park, those are about twelve feet tall. And they don't throw light very far, they really are intended to light a narrow, you know, stretch. So that was something that was proposed more for the walkway to the dog park, not for it being in the dog park. The other thing we get is some of the, some of those poles are, the innards are corroded from the dogs peeing on them. So we're trying not to have any of the lighting infrastructure in the park itself. So that's, there really wasn't a very effective or cost effective or even lighting effective method to use those types of poles. In terms, yeah, we could do a, we could do a foot candle study. The, you know, the, it's gonna show that the, that the, the actual illumination, it's not gonna be from behind the pole. All the light throw is gonna go out and, you know, so yes, we could, we could have them prepare that. Yeah, because we had that, we had that done for the tennis court lights when we were looking, we were looking at options because they're different ones.
You know, it's not like a huge study for them to get the square footage and.
Part of the quote.
Yeah, for sure.
Right, so, you know, I mean, I I don't, I I, we can get it done.
Yeah, I just, from like a resident standpoint, I think if something was placed in front of the however many houses are on that side, saying this is the change that's coming. Here's a time for you to, you know, and I, understanding that commission notes have been available on this topic. I was personally trying to keep a baby alive.
I understand. I understand.
But I just think a little bit more knowledge to the people who live on on that street would be, would be welcome.
Sure, because the photometric plan will show that, you know, there's going to be, basically, south of the alley, there's gonna be no light that's coming from this pole.
There won't be a glare, but I would assume that there would still be some, some light that would.
Not on a, the photometric won't, it won't show that. I've I've seen a lot of photometric plans.
And that's, I think, from like, from a neighbor perspective, if we're shown that, I think people would be happy to.
Go. And then, I had something else and it's gone.
Can't be any worse than the street lighting. The ambient lights from the lights over the streets, I mean.
Or Iron Ridge.
Yeah, I mean.
I think, as we said maybe ten minutes ago, why don't we go ahead and do that and then bring it back to a rec commission meeting? Where people can just see the result, I think is probably the thing to do. I I can't recall how much lighting is coming off of six ninety-six and other sources, that might be even more than that light as, you know, reflecting back to the home, I don't know. But we can give you what we got.
Powerful, right?
Yeah, just so people know what the impact will be. Does that make sense?
It does, now, the photometric plan will be prepared and that won't take any background, because that's just a, they they put in the angles and put it in a computer program and it shows what that light will generate, it doesn't take the background condition into consideration. That's a whole nother thing that somebody has to go out with equipment and measure, so I just want to, you know, be clear that.
Be cautious, yeah, on what we're providing.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, do we want to, I mean, we could do the rec commission meeting, invite Kensington, do you want to send a letter to them?
We, we, we can. You tell me, what would you like? Because you'll probably need to make a motion to like it.
Right.
So, yeah, I, my personal view is that all of Kensington wouldn't be affected by this. It's really the few homes around it. And so we could make sure that those few homes around it are aware when it lands on the rec commission meeting. That would be my recommendation. I mean, it doesn't hurt to let everybody know, but then everybody will know anyway because the rec commission meeting is published, so anyone could know.
I am okay with that. My concern being the lack or potential lack of quorum at the rec meeting, does it make sense to bring it? Though they will have new commissioners, but I guess my question would be, make more sense to bring it back to the city commission? And and I, I I'm just asking the question, but.
It could be either from my perspective, I just, it, because it seemed to, if I recall correctly, started there, I'm thinking it should probably end there.
End there, okay.
That was my thinking, but.
So are you thinking it's contingent upon, like, if we approve it, it's contingent upon the rec commission?
I don't think it needs to be, actually, I'm just saying that one of the things that we can do to make sure people are informed is to give them the information because it seems so many people are in favor of this. I don't know that we'd hear anything that would even change your support for lighting, just making sure that it's done in a way that isn't intrusive.
Yeah, for sure, not intrusive and that people are aware.
Yeah.
So just adding to it.
Can you invite the dog park people then to that meeting? I mean, since the fees are going up and the fees are, are, you know, I mean, we're contributing to the.
And it's a public meeting too.
It's a public meeting, so everyone's invited.
Well, I'm just saying, if there's gonna be, I mean, I think there'd be dog park people that'd be interested in the plan too.
Absolutely.
Okay. Actually, it's not my okay, it's. Does that make sense, I think?
And one more idea, I don't know if now's the time to introduce, but we had talked about, like, I don't know if we're gonna sunset the price increase at the end of the payback or like, do we set up a sinking fund, like if we're taking in more revenue than the dog park costs? What do we do in, like, let's say we approve ten dollars and it's four years, or twenty dollars and it's two and a half years? What happens on like the fifth year?
The other, I I, I I think the plan would be to take those monies and put them towards other capital improvements like.
On that list.
On that list.
So there will be like a separate account for the dog park then, that'll?
I mean, the budget, like, they account for those things, so.
Correct, but it's rolled into like rec right now and we're increasing a specific, I, I guess that's my question is, do we get to that level of granularity? And does it make sense to like roll back that price increase or, I don't know, like to make it better for the dog park visitors?
Well, I think, you know, that was partially why we were asking about other improvements and, you know, if there is an appetite for other things, and there were a lot of other suggestions. I, you know, I think at the, a couple of years from now, we just do another survey.
That makes sense, man, I suspect that we'll always have projects that we'll want to consider for improvement at the dog park, as we do for other parks.
There's still a significant number of people who either were in favor of no increase or low increase, I want to be cognizant of those folks.
What, was it half were in favor of twenty?
Yes, twenty or more.
Twenty or more.
Right. Three quarters were in favor of ten or, ten or more.
The vast majority is.
Can I speak to that and answer it?
I mean, I was just gonna say, I think the reason is for people who use it all the time is because there, there really hasn't been that much investment in the infrastructure for a while. And I'm sure, you know, there's, there's been lots of other things going on. But like the bench, the one bench is rotting and falling apart. Residents who use the dog park have contributed chairs, we've contributed chairs. But we're not, you know, we're not going out and getting hundred dollar chairs, we're getting twenty dollar chairs from the hardware store. So we're supplying stuff and we're not giving the, a bill to the city, right? So I don't think a rollback would be a good idea because there's gonna be stuff like this water fountain issue where the pipes broke and other things that I I, I would say as longtime members, that it'd be important to invest in that so that, you know, our dogs have a life cycle. And if you continue to have dogs, but new residents come in, I think it's a great asset, it's like the pool helps sell houses here. Why not make this, and that whole park system has been great. I was talking with Commissioner Sheer, Schmier earlier today or yesterday, and sorry, I mispronounced your name, to a friend. But, you know, when, when the park went through, and we live at the end of Maywood, and I was, you know, weighing out, not having any other way to drive, right? Around to Amherst and Wellesley, but that also was no place for a sidewalk and it was dark back there. So the benefit to the community and to us to have that be a dead end or whatever you call.
Cold sec.
Thank you. It's not, it's not, it's not not landing, but we'll just leave that. But, you know, that I think was a good decision and I, we supported it. So I think that's where all this comes in, is where we're making sure we're not harming, you know, our neighbors, but that we're creating something that is adding benefits. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to see it rolled back personally because I think there's just so many other needs. And I can only buy so many chairs from Ace Hardware for the, for the dog park.
If I remember the benches, they're still the old ones from the old pool, I think, with the two big cement things with the wood in the middle.
Those are newer additions, they came during the pandemic. Did Frank paint those?
Because those are probably a hundred, well, seventy-five years old, and you're just getting your two by fours, I I don't know if that's part of our repairs cycle. Well, anyway.
So what is the plan?
I think there are two decisions, first to do the lighting. And then secondly, to agree on the amount to increase the, the dog park fee to, whether it's ten or twenty. My, my recommendation in having heard everything is to leave it at twenty, only because I think half of the folks are okay with twenty. And I don't think most, I I think that there will always be projects to do in the dog park that will use that twenty dollars times number of dog park members. And it'll just keep things like benches and water and everything in a good condition.
It's a good wear and tear kind of place, so.
Exactly.
It is heavy wear and tear.
It is.
Corrosive, corrosive materials happening regularly there.
There has not been an increase for a long time.
Was there anyone else that wanted to speak from residents on dog park?
You can.
That's, I, you, you said it.
That's okay.
I'm with you, I'm new, and so I just, she, she pinged me from the dog park to swing out.
Well, he's in the new in our dog park crew.
Oh, welcome.
This is his first meeting.
Sure, so, my name is Kevin, I am, I live on Sylvan.
Which house are you in on Sylvan?
Eleven Sylvan, the one with the three windows up the, up the side, yeah. So we just moved here from Colorado, I grew up in Madison Heights, but interestingly, in Colorado, behind our house, we had, it was like four miles by four miles off-leash dog park.
Wow.
So it was just stunning, I mean, the mountains were in the background and there was like rivers and it was, it was the best place I've ever been, it was so happy.
It's basically like six ninety-six.
I mean, really, I, you know.
Concrete river.
Yeah, and Robert Campbell was our Realtor and he was like, oh, there's a dog park right, right behind the house, and I'm like, awesome, this is gonna be great. And when we, we just went there for the first time this, last weekend, I have a little baby chihuahua. And there's actually a lot of room back there, it's really, it's really beautiful, it was, he had a lot of fun, I met a couple of people already. So I just want to say I really appreciate it, it's, it's not four miles by four miles, but it's really, really nice.
For a chihuahua.
It's mountainous to a chihuahua.
You have a dog park beard in our whole community.
Yeah, it's crazy, I mean, you could hike for two, two hours and not see to the end of it, there were like coyotes that prowled back there, I mean, there is.
Oh, we have that same issue, so very.
Thank you. All right, I think we're ready for, or was there any other comments?
No, 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 I think I'm ready to make a motion, but I might need a little help. So, Your Honor, I move the city proceed with the lighting project, increase dog park fees by twenty dollars starting July first, two thousand twenty-three, and prioritize getting reliable water source this year. And should I add photometric report to be presented at the rec, the next rec department commission meeting?
Is the photometric report the right? Or how would you describe it?
Yeah, I think a photometric plan.
Okay.
Do you want, should we just mail them to the houses on Kensington?
Why don't we do that?
Okay.
It's just easier.
So.
So, and if we proceed this way, what's the neighbors who bought the parks recourse if they have any questions or changes?
As with anything, please come. Yeah.
Okay, so should I start again?
And reach out with questions.
Absolutely.
Like I said, data is powerful, I think people just want to know what's going on, and if we can be given something that says, hey, this isn't gonna have minimal impact, this is what the numbers are. I think a lot of people will, we hear thirty foot floodlight, like last night when I heard it, I was like.
It sounds like Field of Dreams.
Right, yeah, that's what I like picture in my head, right? So I think, right, I think, you know, being shown differently and being showed numbers, I think will be helpful.
Sure, totally get it.
Okay.
All right.
I will try again, from the beginning, do I need to make it? From the beginning, Your Honor, I move the city proceed with the lighting project, increase dog park fees by twenty dollars starting July first, two thousand twenty-three, and prioritize getting reliable water source, and for a photometric report to be mailed to all Kensington residents on the east side of the street.
North side?
The, the northeast side of Kensington, butting the dog park.
Okay, may I have a second?
I second.
Any other comments?
Should just go to the people on the north, should go to the people on the south too, or is it mostly a, a north?
People on the south won't even notice there.
Okay, great.
So, so we had talked about maybe doing like a public hearing at an upcoming rec commission meeting. Do we need to add that to the motion, like, so the Kensington neighbors will receive this information? And then what's, like, I'm just putting myself in their shoes. Uh, and then what's, like, I'm just putting myself in their shoes, then what's the next step?
I, I think um, I think if uh any residents on Kensington have an issue with the lighting, they can come to either meeting. We can't, we could bring it back to the rec commission because that's where it started if we'd like. Uh, but then uh we should probably have a liaison do that, or just make sure that it's on the agenda. I, I don't really have a preference, to be honest.
I, I just have a concern about sending it back to the rec commission when they haven't really been involved.
Hmm.
They didn't have a quorum, so they got, they provided um unofficial feedback.
Then, then let's um, just, right.
It should be here.
All right, then let's bring it back here um at the, at the meeting following the availability of the photometric report.
Great. Are there any timing constraints that we need to work around?
I mean, I, getting the photometric plan could take a week or three.
Great.
Um, so we'll just, when it's ready, when we have a chance to mail it out. Now, it's gonna have to be a, we had a second on the motion, so that's gonna have to be amended.
Right, can you amend that, please? Sorry.
Time, okay. Photometric, so what are we saying, photometric report to be mailed?
Do we have to, I'm sorry, from a procedural standpoint, do we have to vote and then amend, or do we just amend?
Amend and then vote.
Amend and then vote.
Amend.
Men second to vote.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Let's try again.
Okay, should be mailed to re- to residents.
And uh brought back to the city commission meeting uh following the availability of the photometric report.
And the second has to agree to that amendment. And brought back.
The same two, or it doesn't matter? Has to be the same two.
And brought back to the CC following the release of the report?
Mm-hmm. Availability or?
The availabil- release, or the delivery, the delivery of the.
Go for it. And it may be that you get it in the mail before, ideally before we bring it back here.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, let me try this again. Your Honor, am I starting, am I amending, or just can I just start?
Amend, whatever you wanna amend, or you can just read the whole thing.
I'm just gonna read the whole thing. Your Honor, I move the city proceed with the lighting project, increase dog park fees by twenty dollars starting July first, two thousand twenty-three, and priori- prioritize getting reliable water source. Um, also a photometric report to be mailed to Kensington residents on the northeast side of the street abutting the dog park and brought back
Mm-hmm.
to the city commission following the delivery of the report?
Yes.
Okay.
For public comment?
For public comment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe it doesn't need to say that. I second.
All right, let's have a vote, I think, yes.
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries. There will be dog park lighting. Thanks for everyone that participated in the, in this topic. We are very happy that um it was brought to us and we can, we can help on this.
Well, we'll invite you all to come drink water at the dog park.
There you go.
The summer. We'll make sure that there's no debris in your way, we'll have a clear view of that.
Thank you.
Excellent.
All right, um, this is a good one, the art project introduction.
Yes.
It is exciting.
Um, as we know, Pleasant Ridge has been a creative community for a long time. Um, we've had a lot of artists, designers, creative people of all types who lived in Pleasant Ridge, continue to live in Pleasant Ridge. Um, and something that I've been uh working on, putting together is the framework for a public arts initiative. Um, the goals would be to promote community involvement in the arts, uh foster education and appreciation of all kinds of art, uh build excellence in place, expand the public realm, add value to the community, create a canvas for local and regional artists and creative thinking, and enhance Pleasant Ridge as a place to live artfully. We've been, I've been working with uh one of our on-call landscape architects, Ralph Nunez, he designed the patio at the community center. He laid out the uh area in front of city hall, he did the landscape design for the Woodward crossover. Um, he was one of the ones who, when he was, he didn't get the job to design Gainsborough Park, but he was the one who came in and said, you know, you, you really should buy that last house on Kensington and use it to connect the uh, the dog park to the community garden and uh, well, actually, that's what allowed us to move the community garden up there. So um Ralph's been involved with Pleasant Ridge for quite some time. Um, in the packet is uh some brainstorming notes for what the arts initiative would be. Um, there's a lot of different ways we can take this. Um, sculptures in the Green Belt parks, um indoor and outdoor uh photography, painting, textile arts. Um, really just trying to use this as a way to improve the quality of place for the entire community, um in our parks, in our buildings. Um, summer uh camp programming, arts educational uh things as part of summer camp for the kids. Um, one of the things last year was they did murals and drawing on the wall um in the um parking lot, in the auxiliary parking lot over at uh Four Ridge. And uh, you know, they had a blast, so let's, you know, build on that. Uh, one of the things we were looking forward to doing was trying to partner with CASA since it was going to be in the community, but that got blown up, so. Cross through that. Um, the uh next step that I would, I would like to suggest uh would be founding or creating an arts council. Uh, the city charter gives the city commission the ability to create uh boards and commissions. And um, I, I would recommend that we create an arts council to take this and, and oversee it. Uh, we have a lot of people who know a lot more about actually, you know, about art than, than I do for sure. Um, and uh let's tap into that. Um, there's some information in the uh packet about the um purpose and authority that would be granted to the arts council. The um biggest question, of course, is funding, so we do have a new um funding stream uh from marijuana money. Um, it's not something that we've budgeted for or counted on because it's uncertain still at this point. Um, this year, we did get a little bit more than fifty-one thousand dollars of marijuana tax revenue um for having the Sozo dispensary in town. Uh, so uh the suggestion is for this year at least, allocate that money to as seed funding for the arts initiative. The foundation um is, has agreed to provide funding from their auction towards this, this initiative as well. Once the arts council is established and starts operating, they can go after grants, there's external funding sources. Um, pieces that artists place on display, if they're sold, commission could come to the arts council um for placing those on display. So there's ways that this can, can, can grow and become self-funding over time beyond just the, the marijuana money. Uh, which, you know, last year was fifty-six thousand dollars per dispensary, this year is fifty-one thousand dollars, so we don't know where that's gonna go. It's kind of a windfall right now. Right, we have an idea of where that's gonna go and I don't think it's up. Um, and assuming that the dispensaries in town survive, so.
Yeah.
You know, we'll, uh, we'll see where that goes. Uh, but that's just um, at this point, you know, that's uh something that I would like to introduce and suggest uh to the city commission. Um, if you're amenable to the concept of creating an arts initiative, the following are the recommended next steps. Establish an arts council by resolution, including the purpose and authority and jurisdiction items in the agenda packet. Uh, direct city staff to create an arts fund in the upcoming fiscal year twenty-four city budget and authorize the use of marijuana sales tax revenue to um seed that arts fund. Future year allocations will be made as part of the budgeting process. Um, if we want, if the city wanted to continue to allocate, you know, summer all marijuana money to that or other sources, that's up to you in the, in the uh, in the annual budget process. And then uh direct staff to seek applications from residents interested in serving on the arts council. Um, one of the things that was suggested, and I would uh point this out, would be um the membership of the arts council. Uh, I was suggesting five uh members of the public, one city commission member um to ensure that, you know, you were actually, uh, one city commissioner could be a member and participating member of the arts council, um just to maintain that connection between the city commission and what they're doing. Um, and then that the city manager would also sit on that, um since we would be involved in um a lot of the, you know, implementation of it. It could be all seven, it could be a seven member from the public with a city commissioner liaison. Uh, but I would, I would recommend the city commissioner at least be an ex officio member of this, that with participating rights. And then um the city manager could be removed from that as well, so I would just suggest that you discuss that, but um I think the rest of it is, is fairly straightforward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
It's really exciting. I mean, um, I, I think back a few years ago, we were able to donate some of our play equipment to Pontiac. And that is still something that has had a lasting effect to kids and to other people in that community. And an art council will just have an ongoing lasting ability for us to, to enrich our own lives and the lives of the people around us. Um, I had this conversation with our rep Helena Scott and she said, you know, this is, this is a great way to get people from all of the zip codes around us to do something cool together, and I'm really excited about it. And then art is just something that touches everybody. Even if you don't think you like art, it actually does mean something to all of us, even if it's in the most uh simple things. So I'm really excited.
Me too, and I think our placement in the region is a really good spot to implement something like this. Art is true self-expression, it's freedom of speech, I love it.
And it's one of these things where um, uh, we're a very small city, but we're sitting at Woodward and six ninety-six, so we have an opportunity to flex our muscles on something that actually means something to a lot of communities around us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The, you know, one of the things that is really um wonderful about Detroit is no matter what the economic situation is, through all the different ups and downs, it's like you see the creative culture really, you know, strives and helps drive the city. And it's always been that way, and so I think this is, it's the perfect way for us to celebrate that. And, you know, like you said, there are so many creative people from so many different avenues of the arts in our city. It's, you know, it's exciting, you know, it's everything from, you know, visual arts and sculptors and painters and whatever to, you know, musicians and stuff. So it's pretty, it could be very cool, multifaceted. Thank you so much for, you know, really diving into this. That's cool.
Yeah, and I, I, I think, you know, we are really well positioned. We have the Green Belt Park, it's kind of like a natural art park. A lot of times you have plop art, you know, or they'll like plop a sculpture somewhere and it doesn't really relate to anything about it, but we have the, the, just kind of with the physical nature of the community and we have the space to create something that's kind of meaningful. Um, and, you know, cohesive and um it's just, you know, it's fun. And, you know, we, we have the opportunity, we can rotate sculptures on display from various artists. Um, we have to create the infrastructure to accommodate those, but once we do that, you know, it's fairly low cost to have an artist display their piece. And then, you know, it goes away and re- recycle and get new ones in, and if something really resonates with the community, then we can, you know, talk about buying it or making it permanent or keeping it, or if not, then we, you know, there's, so I, there's, there's a lot of different things that the arts council is gonna have to, um, you know, sort through and figure out our approach, but um.
And with the master plan coming up, that could be included potentially in the master plan?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then I like your idea of the suggestion of the city manager and commissioner on there, just because there's um so much financial and planning that would have to happen with all of that too.
Right.
And then a five-member resident committee? And then, yeah, the terms were, of service were interesting too. Um, that you recommended, what was it? It was three-year terms?
Right, so that's consistent with all of our other boards and commissions, so they'd be eligible for two, three-year terms. And of course, those are staggered at the beginning so that, you know, over time, then you have a few seats come up every year. Um, so you'd be appointing somebody to a one-year term at the beginning, but.
And then the city commissioner will rotate every year?
That will be entirely up to how you guys wanna handle that.
Cool. Um, maybe it happens on a two-year cycle, like sort of with elections? I mean, is that how we do?
Yes, that's what we've been doing.
I've been on. We pick every year.
Hmm?
Okay.
Do it?
We pick our liaison positions every year.
That's true.
You do.
We do have staggering.
December meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think.
So, yeah, it could change every year, whichever.
No, no, it's just after elections.
It's the organizational meetings that you.
Oh. Cause I didn't pick, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's entirely up to you as well.
Okay, it would come back here anyway as a, would it be a charter amendment? I can't recall.
No.
No? Okay.
That's not in the charter.
Right. Okay. Any other thoughts?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to also reiterate what everyone's s- said. Um, I think this is excellent. I mean, I love this idea and I, I think just for me, I mean, you know, we all chose to live in Pleasant Ridge because of all of these great things that Pleasant Ridge has to offer. And certainly, I know when I'm walking around and I'm walking the paths and the dog parks and all of that, you have this pride, kind of a ownership and pride of Pleasant Ridge. And I love that this is just gonna add to that as a way to not only celebrate what makes Pleasant Ridge so special, but also kind of to celebrate Detroit and Michigan and everything around us, so I think that's excellent. Um, yeah, I'm really, really excited about this.
Yeah.
So.
Cool.
Yeah.
So Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, do we need to, to point out any of those points at this, right now, like how long terms would be and stuff like that, or do we determine?
I mean, I can, I can go through and give a quick overview of the jurisdiction authority.
I guess the question would be, is any of that needed in the motion?
Do we need that for the motion?
There's a resolution that captures all that, so you don't have to read all of those things.
Do we have to agree to that resolution?
It's uh, I move that the resolution.
Yeah.
Okay, so the terms are, so the terms of the office would be three years of, the city manager would serve indefinitely and the city commissioner member would serve no more than one consecutive full ter- oh, full term.
So two-year term.
And that can be changed at any time.
Okay, okay, great. Then Mayor, I move the resolution establishing the Pleasant Ridge Arts Council be adopted.
Second.
Any other comments? Maybe we have a vote.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, uh, the motion carries. Awesome.
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 So the next steps will be, will be to solicit um applications
Right.
for the uh, for the arts council. Which I think leads us into our next agenda item.
It does. Goals and objectives.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Almost.
Gotta hit myself.
You did.
Uh, yes, goals and objectives. Um, attached are the goals and objectives uh for the upcoming twenty twenty-three, twenty-four uh fiscal year twenty-four budget. Um, every year, the city commission reviews the goals and objectives, adjusts them as necessary based on, you know, some of them are added, some of them drop off. Uh, they're a statement and a communication of what the city commission wishes to accomplish i- in the budget. Um, they are a, a basis for making budget decisions and work priorities for staff over the, over the year. Um, they are patterned after the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Criteria, uh which state that um, the budget should include a statement of our organization-wide strategic goals and objectives. Um, and that's what these are intended to do, to, to meet that uh criteria. Um, everything in the budget relates back somehow to one of these goals and objectives. Um, and there's a goal and objective in there about um arts as well, so. Um, the requested action is city commission consideration and adoption, adoption of the attached uh twenty twenty-three goals and objectives statement.
Thank you. Um, any comments on the? All right, let's, uh, maybe we have a motion.
Mayor, I move that the twenty twenty-three city commission goals and objectives be approved.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, maybe we take a vote.
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Mayor Scott?
Yes, the motion carries.
Okay, now.
Now? All right. Uh, on to our discussion about the board and commission appointments.
Yes. Um, provided to the city commission was a pool of applicants for board and commission openings. Uh, we do retain applications for two years after the date of application, so anyone who applied on or after March twenty twenty-one um was in the, the pool provided to you. Uh, we have openings on all of our boards and commissions. Um, a summary for planning commission DDA, we have one vacant full-term seat uh that's open. Current members Jonathan Disbro and Tim Metias are both serving partial terms and they're eligible for reappointment to their first full term, uh which would expire March thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. The historical commission has two vacant full-term seats and one vacant partial-term seat for a term that ends in twenty twenty-four. And current member Jaclyn Huffman is eligible for reappointment to a second term uh which would expire in twenty-six. The recreation commission has one vacant full-term seat, one uh partial-term seat that expires in um. Twenty twenty-six, or one vacant partial-term seat that expires in twenty twenty-five, is that correct, twenty twenty-six? That might be a typo, we'd have to look and see. Border review has one vacant full-term seat for the alternate position. And uh, we do also have a vacant uh, full-term seat for the Huntington Woods Library Board. Uh, so the requested action is city commission appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions.
Thank you, yes. For the historical commission?
Yes, mayor, I move that the appointment to the Pleasant Ridge Historical Commission. Of Sarah Council and Mark Campbell to serve full terms to expire March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. And Lauren O'Reilly to serve a partial term to expire March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And the reappointment of Jacqueline Huffman, term to expire March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
The recreation commission years were correct.
Oh, okay. Alright, um, may, uh, any other uh, comments? Do we have a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Scott.
Yes, the motion carries. And on to, sorry. The planning commission.
Thank you, and DDA.
And DDA.
So, um, mayor, I move that the appointment of T. Scott Galloway to the Pleasant Ridge Planning Commission and DDA. To a full term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And the reappointments of Jonathan Disbro and Tim Matias, terms to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six be approved.
Any comments? A vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Mayor Scott.
Yes, and that motion carries. Um, on the recreation commission, do you have the names or would you like me to?
Do you have the name?
I do have the names, I was digging them up.
Oh, great.
I'd forgotten to get those to you.
Sorry, I forgot to ask.
Oh, actually, I do not. We may have to wait on that one. You wanna reach real quick? Why don't we go uh, uh, head to the border review while we dig that up?
I can do that. Mayor, I move the appointment of Sarah Council as alternate to the Pleasant Ridge Border Review be approved.
Any uh, comments?
I understand she has stepped in very. Is, is very qualified and stepped in to really. Help make everything flow smoothly.
Alright, well, we have a vote on that.
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. Uh, let's see, in order to keep this going. Oh, library, I missed one.
I can do library.
Okay.
Um, mayor? I move the appointment of Michelle Curtin as the city's representative to the Huntington Woods Library Board be approved.
Second.
Any comments? Could we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Yes, that motion carries.
Alright.
Can we, uh?
Yes, I think we're ready.
Are we ready?
Almost, yes. I have two, uh, three. Alright. So. I'm gonna ask one more question about, because we have a partial term.
Right.
So mayor? I move that the appointments to the Pleasant Ridge Recreation Commission of. Amy Miller? To. The full term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And Don St. Aubin to a partial term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And. Erin. Gregorio? Thank you. Um, to a partial term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. And the reappointment of Corey Trusdale. Um, term to expire March thirty-first, twenty twenty-six be approved.
Second. Alright, are there any other uh, comments on these? Thank you, by the way. May we have a vote?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries.
Sorry about that.
Government in action. Alright, um. Cool. Alright, um. On to item twelve.
I think we skip it. If we skip it, it won't happen.
Um, it's, you know, it's been a genuine pleasure to work with Amy and I think Jim has some words as well.
Well, um, we have in the uh, packet a resolution of appreciation. From the city commission uh, to be adopted, so. Uh, we have that for approval. Amy came to the city in nineteen ninety-eight. Spent twenty-five years, she was hired as water clerk. Became city clerk in two thousand two and was appointed assistant city manager in twenty nineteen. As the resolution states, she was exemplary and uh, in her, her job performance. Her administration of elections was, was excellent, um, unfailingly. She was a valuable part of the administration um, here for twenty-five years, taking on increasing roles and responsibilities. That uh, went well beyond the narrow scope of the city clerk position. Um, she's been the deputy treasurer uh, for quite some time, um, handles a lot of the. Just keeping the office running and uh, taking care of all the day-to-day items. Residents Pleasant Ridge, I think all value and recognize the hard work that she's done for the city over the years. Making sure everything does run smoothly, that the trains run on time. She's diligent, conscientious, um, and humble in her job performance. Uh, we will miss her professionally, we will miss her as a friend. Uh, although I'm pretty sure we'll probably still see you. We do have an agreement for her to come back on an hourly basis as we did, so.
Oh, good, yeah.
So we uh, therefore be a resolved that the city of Pleasant Ridge does hereby officially recognize contributions of Amy to the residents. And the city commission of Pleasant Ridge during her twenty-five years of employment. And that the uh, be a further resolved that the city commission of Pleasant Ridge on behalf of all the city's residents does hereby express to Ms. Allison. Um, the commission's and the residents' great appreciation for her dedication and service to the city of Pleasant Ridge. Wish her all the best in her future, future personal um, and professional endeavors. And uh, we also have, uh, there's a couple other. It should be pointed out that uh, we have. Resolutions uh, uh, recognizing um, Amy's service to the city from. State Representative Helena Scott and uh, US Representative Haley Stevens, so these are also. For Amy's, um, you know.
And Helene, Helene came to the meeting today.
Yes.
For the, the celebration today.
Yeah, it's really something, I, 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 I've lived here since two thousand eleven, you've been here two and a half times longer, helping people. And uh, it's just been a genuine pleasure, really. I really appreciate all the help that you've provided me. Through the years and I know that a lot of people in town feel the same way.
I've um, I've enjoyed, I've enjoyed being here. It, I, you know, I mean, I can, I can tell you, you here, I, I don't want to work today, I don't want to do this. I like coming here, I like the, the partnership that we have here at the offices and just the genuine partnership that we have with the community. You know, getting to know, you know, people's parents and watching them grow up and then watching them back. So it's, it's been a pleasure to be here for, for all this time.
It's great. Thank you. Yes.
Um, Amy, to. I don't know, I came in at a, a very different time, it's been fun to sort of go through like this whole different, you know, there are so many different issues and. And things that you have to address and that I, or that, you know, you have to help guide us all, have always guided us through. And I can't thank you enough for just always being such a, a stable, like, force for, for the city. And you've made a huge difference and that's what the big question I'm sure we all get from everyone is, who's replacing Amy? And we're all like, well, we have the amazing Kirsten and everything and, and the whole thing, but it's like they're, people know. And very much appreciate just sort of the stable um, direction and guidance you've always provided. So, thank you.
If I may, just random, but uh, yeah, I've known you, I think, since ninety-nine maybe, when I applied for my first job as a lifeguard. So uh, not that teenagers are spending much time at city hall, but I've always loved interacting with you and just, you're always so. Kind and polite and like, just professional and just warm and awesome, so I. You are Pleasant Ridge, you know, and like, you're always welcome here and I, it's awesome knowing you, Amy, so. Thank you for all you do and awesome, like, congrats.
And this is only my first year on the commission, but my goal is to know half as much. Half as much and I'll be in a good spot, so thank you, thank you.
May we have a motion?
So, mayor, I move that the resolution of appreciation for Amy Lee be adopted.
Second.
Any other comment?
Thank you, Amy.
Can we have a vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Lenko?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmear?
Yes.
Mayor Scott.
Yes. That one carries.
There you go, you can go ahead and sign that.
Oh, yeah. Alright, while I'm doing that, city managers report.
Yes.
Oh, I have to, can't screw up my own signature.
Yeah. Um, the longest loose brush pickup in recorded history.
Oh, my goodness.
Should continue tomorrow.
Maybe.
I drove down Ridge Road and I'm like, huh.
I haven't, I haven't checked the weather report to see if it's supposed to snow again tomorrow, but um, we should be resuming. If your street hasn't been picked up yet, it will get picked up. If your street has been picked up, they're not coming back. Otherwise, we would be endlessly, it'd be like painting the Mackinaw Bridge. Woodward projects, uh, as you've seen, there are some barrels that have appeared along Woodward. Um, those are related to the resurfacing project, which is in Ferndale and the road diet project, which is largely in Ferndale, also um, on the southbound side here. Uh, we also have um, received the bids, MDOT received the bids back for our street state, streetscape project. On northbound Woodward from Sylvan to six ninety-six and those came in um, nearly on target. They were three percent over. Estimate, which compared to the. Hundred and twelve, whatever it was before, so that's a, that's a going project as well, so that will occur this year. The Woodward Heights, Howard was here, Woodward Heights, uh, we are in design phase on that. The intent is to have a short-term and a long-term plan. Short-term will be, um, you know, with plastic and paint, using plastic bollards and paint to. Start to implement some of the traffic calming measures. There will be some things that are longer term, you know, when you're moving concrete, that's more expensive. There's grants available, which we'll pursue um, to, to help pay for that part of it. So we wanna get the immediate impact with the plastic and the paint, um, and changing, you know, how the street kind of flows. To, to get that um, immediate improvement. Um, so we should be looking at doing that, uh, we hope this, this summer or fall. And then. Can't write it down, I don't know. Wasn't that important?
We'll blame it on the cupcakes. Cool, is there any um, other business that people would like to talk about? Or any questions for Jim on, on the city managers' report?
I have other business.
Okay, I do too. Just a quick one, um, yeah, there, um, Commissioner Budnick could not be here tonight, he is at a, he had a meeting that uh, unfortunately got in the way of this one. But he did leave some comments, I thought I'd just share them. He was uh, very thankful for everyone that had applied for the recreation commission liaison, uh, uh, recreation commission post. Um, he was also excited about the project on the art, oh, around art, he's a, a big proponent of it. And then also just to thank Amy for her twenty-five years of service, he's uh, he'll have a, a cocktail tonight in your honor. After his meeting. And that was it.
Um, so, Mr. Mayor, the um, I want to revisit the whole thing, the um. We have a wonderful Pleasant Ridge neighbor, Jessica Wright, who is from an indie um, synth wave band. Called Moon Date. That she is heading up the Pleasant Ridge version of the International Play Music on the Porch Day for twenty twenty-three. And this will be a um. It, it's going to be called Porch Sessions. And um, so Pleasant Ridge Porch Sessions will take place on Saturday, August twenty-sixth, right here in Pleasant Ridge. And we have been, you know, starting to gauge interest in community members who would be interested and want to host. Or who want to volunteer or perform. And so there is um. There is um, a website, which is. Sites dot google dot com, anyway, just email me at aperry@cityofpleasantridge.org, it'll be way easier. And we'll also have a Facebook page, which is Porch Sessions Pleasant Ridge on Facebook and. You know, you can, you can apply on anything from if you wanna volunteer your porch or help with the day. She has a really great attitude about it, if she just wants this to, to, to roll out gently and, you know, we'll see how it goes. As many, you know, great musical acts and make it, you know, just something that's really enjoyable for neighbors. So stay tuned, we'll have a lot more information on that. The, also, the Pleasant Ridge Women's um, Club is, has trivia coming up again on March twenty-fourth. It is raising money for their scholarship program and they have a big goal that they wanna meet of um. Ten thousand dollars in scholarships to give out this year. And the, this, you know, it's great cause it benefits the kids, anybody who goes to school within the um, Ferndale School District. No matter where you go to school. Now, on Friday, um, March twenty-fourth. Trivia will be at, starting at seven o'clock. It's twenty dollars per person and then uh, they like to have about eight people per table. So even if you don't have a group of people, don't hesitate to reach out to me. And we can put you in a ta- at a table with other people, but it's a great time. It's, they have fifty-fifty raffles, it's a bring your own refreshments and, you know, the first-place team always wins. They get their whole, their full uh, fee back, their registration fee. And then um, there's also a competition for the best table themed, uh, themed table, their decorations. And like I said, all the money benefits the scholarship program. And then, speaking of the scholarship program, then it's time also for seniors right now to be applying. For the, the Women's Club scholarships, as well as the Pleasant Ridge Foundation has scholarships. So if you go to the, I think the city website has information on both of those, is that right? No, or email me and I will get information for you. And so my email again is aperry@cityofpleasantridge.org. And that's all I have, thanks.
Porch Sessions, they, and a link was actually put on PRPR.
Yes.
This, so you can already go, I already signed up to be a volunteer. Volunteer, I don't have a porch, but yes, you can volunteer.
Yes.
So it's already, there's a link up there too.
Yeah.
I think we convinced uh, former commissioner Jason Krizyak to play the spoons. Cause he doesn't play any other music instruments, so. He'll just have fun doing that.
I think it'll be a whole family act, so it'll be good.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks.
I remembered.
Oh, good.
DTE.
Oh, yeah.
You know, we had another um, reminder of DTE's. Reliability, I guess, over the past. Um you know, we had another um reminder of DTE's reliability, I guess, over the past couple of weeks. Um and we're preparing some information that we're gonna just put on the city's website, cause it's apparently, you know, um perpetually relevant now.
Mm-hmm.
Um the uh we've we've been dealing with DTE reliability issues since I've been here. We've had a number of meetings over the years. And uh we've been in those meetings with uh representatives from all of the surrounding communities that are, you know, southeast Oakland at least. Um and we all, we're all in the same boat with DTE, uh you know, whenever there's an outage. Um you know, it's frustrating, it's one of the most frustrating things, I mean, we pick up, it's one of the most frustrating things that we deal with because we really have no control over DTE. Um they're entirely beholden to the Public Service Commission. We have a government affairs representative who tells us things, and it's generally helpful and responsive, but, you know, what kind of leverage does Pleasant Ridge or really any local community, whether it's Detroit, Royal Oak, Birmingham, Madison Heights, you know, I I checked in with all the regional city managers um after this last round and asked, you know, have you had any success or, you know? No, they're all, we're all frustrated. Because there's outages and um
you know, it's restorations are haphazard and there's, you know, no rhyme or reason to who gets put on first, so. Um it's a frustration. Um we always tell residents, your first outlet should be the Public Service Commission, they're the ones who regulate DTE. DTE was uh shot down and for the first time really in a long time, the Public Service Commission pushed back against DTE in their last rate case. Uh we're also members of an organization, MIMAWI, the Michigan Association, Mich- Michigan Association for Municipal Utility, I'd have to look it up. But they intervene in rate cases on behalf of local communities um with DTE. Um and they have a roster of people, it's very specific to intervening in a rate case, it's a legal proceeding and you have to have exhibits and witnesses and all of that. And so MIMAWI pools local governments and and we, they know the people um who have been very successful. It um over the years in a number of cases, it's street lighting rate cases, general um DTE utility rate cases. So the uh Public Service Commission pushed back and and required DT to do a number of things and gave them, I think, a ten percent of the entire rate increase they were looking for, saying you need to, you know, increase reliability before you get, you know, these increased rates. And DT's turned around and and almost immediately submitted another rate case, which is going before the Public Service Commission now. Um and the headline is they want a nineteen percent increase in residential um electric rates, with really no evidence whatsoever that they've done anything. I mean, we've all seen, you know, a day or two before the last outages, the presentation that their CEO made to, you know, the shareholders. Doesn't look good for them.
Right.
Based on that, so um that would be the first place that I always direct residents to complain to, but mostly it's also your state legislators. Um and, you know, making sure that they hear this because they have the power to 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 really do something. Um you know, we work as best we can with DTE, but when Royal Oak and Detroit and, you know, Southfield, it will, we're all out. Um there's really, you know, no special leverage that Pleasant Ridge has to influence anything that DT does in terms of getting power back on or long-term reliability improvements. We looked at um what it would be to bury uh electric lines underground uh for Kensington. And what we found is, you know, the idea was where we're doing water main projects, maybe there's synergies. Um DT wants to bury.
And there's also a pilot program that
Which, yeah.
Right, that was kind of.
Which again was, you know, they made a big announcement of how they're spending seven point five billion dollars in pilot programs and where is it? I mean, you've heard nothing about that since they made the the announcement. Um but the long and short of it is for them to bury power lines, they have to move them out of the backyards and into the front yards. They won't go under the street because there's too much other things. Gas is under one sidewalk, water mains are on the other sidewalk, they're not putting it under the street because there's sewers, so they want to put it in residents' front yards, in between the sidewalk and the house. So they have to get an easement from every resident, then you have the transformer boxes that go in everyone's front yard. And oh yeah, by the way, it's also two million dollars to bury the power lines, cause on Kensington, because you have to take them from the rear yard and you have to do one on either side. And um.
And don't residents have to move their power boxes from the back?
Correct, and that doesn't that doesn't include the fact now that, you know, everyone's uh utility, everyone's meter is on the back of the house. So now you have to get the power from the front yard to the meter, so you might have to move the meter or it's it's, so there's a lot of knock-ons. It's 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 not as easy as it sounds and to get benefit, you have to bury the entire circuit. Because, you know, a lot of times, I think four out of the five circuits that are in Pleasant Ridge um are also outside of Pleasant Ridge, uh we're a small place. There's only one circuit that's entirely in Pleasant Ridge. So, you know, a tree falls on a wire in Oak Park or Ferndale or Royal Oak and power goes out here. So all of those power lines would have to be buried in the entire circuit before you would really start to see reliability improvements um at the tune of, you know, two million dollars a street. So, you know, there there's a lot of challenges involved in that, so I I understand DT's dealing with a lot of legacy infrastructure that's difficult. Um they need to do better, but, you know, some of the things like burying power lines, um that's a big lift, that's a that's kind of an order of magnitude above what we're equipped to do right now.
I when I remember doing the math and it was just cheaper to drop a generator at every house than to bury the line.
Yes.
For the days that were out.
It 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 does end up being, yeah, but, you know, we're we've been working, we've been trying to work with DT to figure out, you know, what can be done and and to put, you know, to try to pencil out projects and and what it means. So we're working on it as as best we can and as as much as we can influence, uh but it's, you know, it's one of those frustrating things that you can't control, try to influence, uh but.
Yeah, the the House Energy Committee will be hearing DT tomorrow morning from eight-thirty to ten-thirty, so if you're in the habit of tuning into um Michigan Legislature, it's sort of like watching C-SPAN. Uh you can see their um feedback during this meeting and certain people will be there to provide their comment on their performance or lack of performance. So it might be worth tuning in later, just watching it later to see what DT says, but it it's basically what we've seen times other cities.
Right. And so we are, we are working with MIMAWI to intervene in that rate case again. Uh we are rallying some of the other local communities. I mean, this last one has gotten Birmingham and Madison Heights interested in joining on with the MIMAWI organization. So um you know, there's some growing impetus there, so hopefully that can grow. Um and contact the MPSC and your state legislators.
I've heard you bring up so a couple of different moving pieces, but one is the the rate, the rate case, the rate um the request for a rate increase, uh which we have control over or we can voice our opinions, um as we were just describing. But I I see the other part of the issue as uh like an accounting, uh just a problem caused by accounting or how like repairs are treated as an emergency expense rather than like a capital expenditure, so there's not, right? So i- is there any way or will to change that within at least the utili- like I know that's a gap rule, but like in the, could could this public commission require like you you have to budget and do X, Y, Z tree repairs per year, you know, like uh cause I I don't think it's the money that we're giving them is the pro- or like, I don't know how much money would fix this problem, but like having maintenance is part of your priority rather than just like as an emergency afterthought. Like it helps the books, I understand, but like we we don't get the the service we need, so like how does that part change?
Well, I mean, that's that's beyond my ability to answer that question.
That's the commission.
That's the Public Service Commission. I know in the last rate case, one of the things that was ordered was for DT to do reliability improvements. Now, beyond that, I I can't really, you know, go into detail about what exactly that was, because the MPSC order and the rate case are
So could that MIMAWI help by like crafting, like so average people could ask their representatives, whether it's at the state level or at the the utility board, like a specific question that would, I don't know, be more actionable than like like, cause obviously we can say like, don't raise our rates anymore, please, um but this might be a a way to your request, a more substantial request.
Yeah, I I would suggest, um this is literally, you know, the power of the pen, literally just write the House Energy Committee, who ultimately will hear this and have the opportunity to impact uh the commission and other impact, I mean, they literally could write a law to to impact uh DT and other energy systems um meth- method of managing the age of their system. I mean, the part of the challenge we have in this area is that being one of the first to receive electricity, it's no surprise to me that this whole area has aging trees and aging equipment that just simply wasn't um taken care of for so long now that all of these problems are starting to pile up. With every wind blow and every snowstorm, we have have houses that are out. Um but definitely send any specific questions that way. And then uh that's that's one avenue.
Representative Scott, um when she was at this evening's gathering, she was saying that she is on that committee.
Mm-hmm.
And her face was not happy.
No, no, she chairs that committee and she's uh it's it's come to her more often than anything else. Um a- and at a time when we're also questioning the goal for the state to go to half electric vehicles by twenty thirty, so. How can you convince people to move to an electric car when their, when the electric appliances in their home can't even run? How do you convince people to move away from a gas stove or a gas uh lawnmower when the electric supply isn't
Right.
considered to be uh just at least people don't feel that it's uh stable. Uh so it's definitely on the top of their minds to make this better.
Yeah, and even even reporting, it's
Yeah.
incredibly difficult to get just good data on outages.
Mm-hmm.
And how it compares in various areas. We've seen some of that from DT and meetings that they presented to us, but they don't give it to us, so we can't be sure. And then um so I think that's one of the things the MPSC ordered in their last rate case was they have to start, you know, be more accountable with publishing their data. Just to see, you know, how we compare. Um we did get some data from twenty twenty-one on total minutes that were out for each of the circuits and it's you know, there are some sub-circuit level issues we have in around town that we continue to try to get DT to address and they continue to say, well, everything's fine, we say no, but, you know. Um like talking to a wall sometimes, but, you know, it's just getting that data is is something that has been a multi-year process.
A- as an example, when the power went out the last time, we have a representative that writes us as a city um when things go wrong. So I said, could you just send me the information on the DT power outage map? So I see it on my phone. Could you send that to me so that I know whether I need a warming center or something? She says, well, right now we're loading that manually because there's something broken in the back, so that's that's where they're at. I mean, they're literally trying to make, they are trying to make things better and not just visually better, they're trying, but there's uh there are major gaps. So.
Yep.
On that serious note.
Yep.
Uh were there any other um others?
So I have just really quick. Um Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week are board review meetings.
Mm-hmm.
We have sixteen appointments so far. Tomorrow will be one thirty to five, um Thursday, one to five, and Friday, six to nine, or five to nine. They do accept walk-in appeals and written appeals, if people feel that they'd make the appointment and still wanted to go. And then help here to interrupt the hook here, um I know the city manager had mentioned that the auction's coming up, May twentieth.
Mm-hmm.
And just about that same time, petitions will be available for city commission. So you'll be able to pick one of those up at uh City Hall and get your signature to the auction.
There you go. Two for one.
So uh they they should be available just right around um auction time.
Cool, alright, thank you.
Another Pleasant Ridge tradition.
Right. Okay, if there's nothing else, uh I think uh we had a motion to adjourn.
Moving adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.